Tim, how am I doing? You really want to know?
Good to see you. Tim, how am I doing? You really want to know? It's good to see you. Tim, how am I doing? You really want to know?
I'd like to call this meeting of the mayor and city council March fourth, two nineteen to order. Please stand for the pledge led by me and invocation by Mr. Trippit.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we come to you today and we thank you, God, for all of our many blessings. Father, we thank you for our city. We thank you for our community and the way that you have blessed us. God, we give you all praise, honor, and glory. Father, we'd like to take this time to lift up and remember the communities that were hit by the storms yesterday. Those families, Lord, that lost loved ones, we ask you to give them grace and strength for this time. And for the communities that were damaged, we ask you to begin healing and providing for them, Lord, and begin restoration of those communities. Father, we lift up our mayor and city council tonight. We ask you to give them wisdom as they debate and conduct the business of the city. And Father, we lift up these things and ask these things in Christ's name. Amen.
Um, just got item number four, citizens' comments. Is there anybody who'd like to come before this body? And please state your name, address, and try to keep your comments three minutes.
My name is John Crosby on Libby's one fourteen plantation walk Carrollton, not far from here. I'm getting concerned about the square and its health and with the beautification of Maple Street, especially with them houses we built on Rome Street. I hope eventually we're looking at putting a green belt spur in from town to the college and town to hoth property and town to other places. With them houses we're building, allowing them to be built right next to the road and right next to the sidewalk, there's nowhere to expand or put anything down. On Maple Street, probably now the best bet would be to have an aerial walk down there. But if we keep putting stuff right next to the road and right next to the sidewalks, that's even go become impossible. So I'd like for the city just to give some long range thought to the green belt and the health of our downtown square and think about ways, I know we can't buy all the land now, but think about ways to save space where we can do that at a later date. Thank you much.
Thank you, sir. Is anyone else? Seeing no one will move ahead. Item number five, the minutes, February fourth, two thousand nineteen. I take it y'all had a chance to read over all that and need a motion and a second to approve. I have a motion, I have a second. I have a second. Any discussion? All in favor to approve the minutes, raise your hand. Thank you, sir. Um, mayors and council announcements.
I would just like to again recognize City of Carrollton and Georgia Trend Magazine, um, which is a business political magazine that goes statewide. Recognize the City of Carrollton as a mid-sized, complete, packaged city, one of the best cities in the state to live in, work in, and play in. And thank you to all the department heads and all the city employees and everybody in Carrollton and to the mayor and the city council, thank you for that. I just want to point that out. And also I want to publicly thank Joel Richards, who took me on a personal tour of the new evidence room. I know it's not new anymore, but if you have not had the opportunity to go and look at that, it's very impressive. So thank you, Chief. I appreciate it.
I just want to bring everybody's attention that we have Casa Banquet coming up this month and we have, um, the Rafa Clinic at its city station also coming on this month. Anybody that would like to come, I'm sure they'd love to see y'all.
Mr. Mayor, I want to remind you that the quarterly work session is also the retreat for the budget is on the thirteenth of April at Callaway. Ms. Duke will be getting with you, giving you specifics. The GMA convention is coming up and if you are interested in going to that and taking classes, so it's time to register for that again. Ms. Duke will be getting in touch with you on that. Uh, we, y'all voted to approve, uh, a joint project with Tanner Medical along Dixie to upgrade a lot of those storm drains, uh, quite a while ago. That construction is underway and the piping parallel to Dixie's been done. It's time to cross Dixie. I don't have the specifics at this time. We're going to work out a schedule that minimizes the downtime on the road, but there is going to be some downtime on Dixie Street, which will complicate a lot of lives. Uh, as we work that out and as Tommy Holland works that out with the contractor, uh, we will get that information out to the public and get it out to you. Uh, we're about to launch our website. April Saunders has been working on it and she went through it with me the other day. I was absolutely blown away. That is not my cup of tea. I'm fifty-nine years old and I remember when we didn't have, I remember when we had party lines, much less cell phones and computers and websites, but ours is going to be second to none and she's done a fantastic job. And just real quick, Mr. John about the houses on the sidewalk, that was owned and approved several years ago against many of our objections and hopefully we wouldn't do that again. But I understand your frustration with it. Thank you.
Um, I forgot to add something. Is there any way IT, where is the IT department? Can you make this live so that we can touch an agenda item and then it just pops up? Is that, you can't do it now, but could you do that for the future? Okay, good, because we have to scroll through here and it's hard to find. So if you could make that live so we could just touch it and it just pops up? Thank you. Wouldn't that be nice? Jim, won't that be nice? Why don't you smile? Smile.
All right. Item number eight, approval of agenda items for consideration. I believe we have a, um, something, Tim.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I would ask that you remove the NSP bid award. There have been some changes by the Fed and by DCA on that program and we are trying to figure those changes out. So we hope to bring that back to you in April, but I would ask that you remove that from the agenda tonight. And then I would ask that you add resolution ten two nineteen, uh, which is a resolution in opposition to House Bill three oh two and the Senate Bill one seventy-two, uh, which basically strips local governments from the ability to regulate, uh, development and housing standards. So, and I'll speak more about that when we get to that item if you agree to add it.
I move that we approve the agenda as is, except that we remove item number five, the bid award NSP and substitute in its place, um, resolution ten dash two thousand eighteen regarding the City of Carrollton's opposition to HB three oh two and SB one seventy-two.
Motion and second. All in favor?
Will there be any discussion?
Any discussion.
Okay, so remind me again why we, uh, why we're not discussing number five?
Oh, the, when we went into this program, we knew that houses would be fairly expensive because housing costs have gone up. There was money sitting aside. It was federal money that if we didn't use, we were going to have to give back. Now, the latest version that we're hearing out of DCA is that we cannot sell those houses for less than they cost us. And I don't know that those houses will sell for what they're going to cost us. So I need to discuss that with y'all. We also needed to, we need further discussion with DCA to see if there is some talk about us allowing a forty thousand dollar down payment out of that federal money that if the people stay in house long enough, they don't have to pay it back. But we have not had that confirmed. And so at this point, we don't have enough information to go forward with this.
So will we be able to combat DCA on these, this policy at all? Because it won't make sense.
Well, most of this stuff I heard last week and realize it's a change of administration from one administration to another and those rules are changing. We also got notice that we, we have to end this program, uh, within about a year and we're trying to figure out what that means. But we've got the bids, you know, we're ready to go. We've got the design, we've got the plan. But frankly, I mean, if you wanted to award it tonight and us sit on it, we could do that, but we just don't think that was wise. And I would rather if you would give us a couple of weeks to figure this out with DCA.
So this, this program will be highly ineffective if the people can't, if it's a program for first time, uh, low income home buyers and they can't afford to buy the houses, then what will happen to the houses? It's almost like they orchestrated this to give those houses to the rich or to people who have.
I mean, what I didn't want is to build a house and it sit there and then we couldn't do anything with it. I just thought that would be the worst possible scenario, so.
Who's behind this? Like what person up there?
I don't know.
Let me, um, this is ridiculous. Heartless. Sad. This world.
All right, moving ahead. Uh, proclamation Tyler Newsom. Did we vote? Excuse me, did we vote? Yeah. All in favor of dropping neighborhood stabilization and putting in place resolution ten dash two nineteen? Um, please raise your hand. All opposed?
I'm not voting at all because I think this is asinine and it's absurd. And I hope whoever did it feels the ripple of what I just said all the way wherever they are.
Motion carries. Um, moving ahead to proclamation Tyler Newsom. Uh, Gerald, this is you and Rory Wolje.
Actually, it's me and Rory.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
All good. So, uh, we have, uh, amongst us tonight, a esteemed guest, Mr. Tyler Newsom, back in the back. Wave Tyler. And Tyler is a, uh, is a punter for, was a punter for Notre Dame and before that is a punter at Carrollton High School. And, uh, we got a little video, I think Libby's, Libby's going to show. Hopefully the audio will work too. But, uh, anyway, Tyler graduated this year from Notre Dame. That's all right. All right, well, we'll play in just a second. So this is, this was, uh, Tyler's, uh, I guess that the announcer would really brag on Tyler and, and actually the City of Carrollton brought it to mind and Rory was what brought it to mind and Rory's attention was this little, little video clip. But, um, anyway, Tyler played for Notre Dame. They went twelve and one this year. Uh, if you're not a football fan, um, you need to know that that's, that's a really incredible season. They played in the Cotton Bowl against Clemson and got beat. But as y'all probably know, Clemson went on to win the national championship a couple of, a couple of weeks later against a good old Alabama. So it, you, uh, Tyler and his team have nothing to be ashamed of. They had an incredible year and Tyler was a big part of that. And I'll, I'll brag on him a little bit later. He was also the, the team captain. But let's, let's show this video and notice the haircut. I'll leave it there.
Notre Dame's hopes fading fast. Down thirty-three as we go to the fourth quarter. Tyler Newsom has had a tremendous game. It was likely his last game. Great hustle by Gilman, he couldn't save it. And what a career it's been for Tyler Newsom. We talked earlier, captain. Got every vote from his teammates. Brian Kelly said, no player's ever done that and he's a punter and spends a lot of time by himself at practice. Spoke with Tyler the other day from Carrollton, Georgia. He's played Atlanta and Birmingham. Said he wasn't highly recruited in high school. As a matter of fact, he didn't punt until after his junior, senior year in high school. He went to a couple of kicking camps. He paid his own way to go to Notre Dame. He said, I'd already been to four or five. My parents, I didn't want to ask them for money. I was a lifeguard. I had a hundred and fifty bucks to my name. So my aunt, who worked for an airline, got me a buddy pass. I went to the Atlanta airport to fly up there and they told me I wasn't going to get on the plane. They didn't have any seats. There's Adam Joyce in the long run. I'm walking away from the gate. They called me at the last minute, come on, we have a opportunity for you. We have a seat. So he went to Notre Dame. He competed in their camp, paid his hundred and fifty dollars to go to the camp out of his own pocket. They picked four punters to kick in front of Brian Kelly. He was not one of them. Tavion Feaster, the running back now. Long throw by Trevor Lawrence and almost a one-handed catch made. So Newsom thought, uh, that's it. I'm not going to get an opportunity at Notre Dame. And Bob Elliott, longtime member of the Notre Dame staff grabbed him and said, you know what? You're really good. I'm above your level. I'm going to get you in front of Brian Kelly. And Brian came out of his office, watched him punt and said, wow. And he said, Coach, I've never punted in a game in my life. He said, I don't care. We've seen enough. We're going to give you a scholarship. Almost didn't get on the plane, almost didn't get in front of Brian Kelly. Will leave as one of the great punters in school history and a captain and deservedly so. He is a very impressive young man.
So, uh, anyway, sweet mullet, by the way. That's a good-looking haircut. He doesn't look anything like that today. In fact, I met him for lunch. He was kind of to meet me for lunch today up on the square and I walked in and obviously he has had a haircut, so I didn't recognize him. I didn't know who he was. He had to kind of point himself out to me. So anyway, good to see you again, Tyler. But, uh, just to kind of wrap up, in, in the Notre game, Notre Dame Clemson game, he, he punted eight times because Clemson's got a pretty good defense and averaged forty-six, over forty-six, uh, yards per punt, which is pretty good. But he had, again, had, had a good lunch and talked about Trojan football. And by the way, I was looking up down the, the stage up here and all five of us graduated from, uh, from Carrollton except for our city attorney. And, uh, he went to the, the county school, Central. And I told him, he said, how about the Carrollton Central rivalries? We need to get that thing back going again because it's been about ten years since, or nine years I think since the two teams have played, which I think is a great idea. But I told him, I said, back, back when I was coming along, Central used to wear us out in football and this guy was part of the problem. Uh, they beat us, uh, I think all four years I was in high school and, and won two night, or two state championships. So Chuck Conley was part of that. But anyway, the rest of us all went, went to Carrollton. But anyway, Tyler, we just really are proud of you and wanted to give you a little proclamation tonight and hopefully the, the paper will take a picture of you and your, your mom. I see Debbie's back here in the back and Coach or, or Dr. Albertis is as well. Debbie and I went to high school together. But anyway, just really proud of you for all you've done for our, our community and, and, uh, your work ethic and then also giving back to, to the community up there. And hopefully you'll give back to Carrollton if you ever move back this way. He's probably going to go pro, so, uh, we'll see what happens there. But anyway, on behalf of, uh, the mayor and the council, Tyler Newsom earned acclaim as a punter for the Carrollton Trojans and the Fighting Irish of Notre Dame. He was named the Atlanta Journal Constitution, um, Journal and Constitution, Georgia Class Quad, a all-state squad. He was a four-year starter and a first time, uh, and first full-time Irish punter to be named as team captain. Whereas Tyler survived a serious accident his junior year at Carrollton High School and not only returned to the football field despite medical opinion that he would never play again, he also found inspiration in his experience to lead a life of service, giving back to the world more than he received. He has logged more service hours than any, any other student athlete at Notre Dame. He earned the Irish Alumni, excuse me, the Irish Around the Bend Award, given to the Notre Dame football player who best serves his local community. And he earned the Notre Dame Community Champions Award for student athletes who best exemplify leadership commitment and selfish selflessness. So whereas Tyler's personal belief that nothing is given to you, everything is earned, he sustained, has sustained him through personal struggles and, and lifted him to personal and career heights, we recognize Tyler Newsom has touched the lives, uh, and earned the appreciation and respect of millions of people around the country. Now, therefore, the City of Carrollton, mayor and council do hereby proclaim today, March fourth, two thousand nineteen, as Tyler Newsom Day in Carrollton in recognition of his personal accomplishments and the acts of service as well as the publicity is given to the, to the City of Carrollton. We proudly present this proclamation as an expression of our affection and admiration from the mayor and the council and the citizens. So Tyler, this is, this is your day. I'm not sure what that gives you. Maybe Rich will give you a free beer at the tavern or something. Other than that, just congratulations. Just thanks a lot.
And I'm proud to say Tyler was one of my students.
Moving ahead, Ms. Stutter, rezoning request?
The only rezoning request on your agenda this evening is a rezoning request located at two oh six Austin Avenue. And it is for, um, a rezoning from C three, Neighborhood Commercial to C two, General Commercial. And, um, the request is to, I, I said Austin Avenue, I apologize. It's actually Noonan Road, two oh six Noonan Road. Um, it's, uh, the request is from C three to C two, General Commercial, to allow for the addition of a paint booth at a vehicle repair shop. This vehicle repair shop has been, um, in existence for some time in this location. However, it's considered an existing non-conforming use because those are not allowed in C three. Um, the, uh, vehicle repair shop does want to add a paint booth in the back and because they would be expanding that non-conforming use, they've got to rezone the property. Uh, the planning commission reviewed this request in February and they made a recommendation unanimously to approve the request. We did have one abstain because they had a conflict of interest with the following waivers and conditions. And number one, waive, a waiver to reduce the northern setback from twenty feet to eleven feet and the southeastern setback from fifteen feet to twelve feet. Uh, the conditions are that the applicant adhere to all state and local, uh, and local fire and building code requirements for paint booths, that the applicant adhere to the landscaping requirements of the C two zoning districts, including the streets, uh, streetscape trees on Noonan Road and West Avenue. Um, the streetscape trees in the northeastern rear of the property will be used as a natural landscape buffer to the residences across the street. Also that the applicant be required to replace the landscape strip between the sidewalk and Noonan Road that was removed some time ago. Uh, the landscape strip should align with the adjacent property Uh, the landscape strip should align with the adjacent property and will allow for the, will still allow for an entrance from Noonan Road, however. I'm here if you have any questions and I think the applicant is also here.
Thank you ma'am. Is anybody here that'd like to speak in favor or in opposition to this request? Seeing none. Any questions from the council? Hearing none. So you're ready to vote? Do we have a motion to approve as a plan just?
So wouldn't I have to hear from the petitioner himself or herself?
Just asked. Nobody stood up.
I would ask y'all. Okay.
Thank you for the opportunity. Um, we got auto repaired into six Noonan Road and we'd like to, um, add a paint booth on the back of my shop. And we'd like to do, um, following all the rulers, do right. And I'd like to be more like eco-friendly, to do better my job and serve better to the community. And also, I mean, I'd like to fix the shop because, I mean, it looks horrible. I mean, it's not look good. You see it's like a round, and two rows in there, so I'd like to make them nice and looking good.
Can you speak in the microphone? I'm having trouble. I'm sorry.
It's too, I mean, we got auto repaired into six Noonan Road and we do auto repair. And I'd like to add a new, uh, paint booth on the back of my shop. Okay, but, uh, to bring the, the, to bring a paint booth in there. So that way it's gonna be better work and serve better to the community. Okay, so that's, I'd like to be remodeling the whole shop because, I mean, it's look, I mean, need help that corner. That's basically what I want to do on the shop.
Thanks sir. Anybody got any questions? For the applicant? Any discussion? Motion to approve by the planning's zoning committee?
I'd like to make a motion to approve with staff recommendations as presented in the agenda package.
Have a motion to have a second? Have a second. Thank you very much. All in favor, please raise your hand. All opposed? Or zero? Resolution oh nine two one nine, code amendment. Chief Richards.
I voted. I voted. I just didn't vote for the stuff I don't like. I voted for that.
Mayor, Councilmembers, I'd ask for, um, Mr. Connolly to drop a city ordinance for criminal trespass. It's a state charge. That we get a lot of those that requires detectives to take a warrant the next morning. The officer stamped the report needed. And quite frankly, they'll just keep the money in the city. It keeps it streamlined for us where the detective doesn't have to go type up a warrant, take it to the judge, get it signed, take it out to sheriff's office, dock it in. Uh, we see this a lot when we arrest you for shoplifting. Every business wants you criminal trespass not to come back on the property. When you do, if you come back and you shoplift again, then all those charges are bound over state court. So we're just asking for a city ordinance to keep it, keep it local and keep it a streamlined process for us.
Anybody got any questions? Thank you, Joe.
Make a motion that we approve resolutions zero nine dash two zero nineteen, code amendment to, um, dash chapter sixty-six.
I'll second that. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I would just like to say this ordinance is a win-win for everyone. It's a win for the victims of the theft because this case will be resolved in a shorter time period. It will bring resolution and certainty to the victim because victim will know where it stands regards to the offender, meaning it won't be automatically transferred to state court. It'll get to stay in city court. And city court has a lower caseload, I think the state court does. And it's also gonna be a win for the offender because the offender may plead innocent. He might want to have his day in court. He'll be able to have a faster resolution in city court than he would state court. Where unfortunately, there is a large backlog. Again, this is no fault of the solicitor or the, or the court system, it's just the way things are. And it's gonna be a win for the city because, um, the city will get the fine money. So, um, I do want to point out that if the offender decides that he wants to have a jury trial, he can still bound over what we call transfer that case to state court. We can have a jury trial. So if he passes this resolution, we're not saying that, that the offender waives us right to a jury trial. He just can go to, um, city court, get a faster resolution. I know there are unfortunately a lot of people who, um, well, there are a lot of people that want to move their case fast. So I think they'll be happy to stay in city court. So I think it's a great resolution and I appreciate the city of police working on this along with our city attorney. Thank you so much to the city police and to Chief, Chief Richards.
Thank you for that clarification. I hadn't thought about the overload of court system. Uh, any more discussion? Have a motion and a second. All in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Ms. Studdard, Maple Street Corridor Beautification Grant.
Thank you. The next item on your agenda is a beautification grant similar, uh, to the beautification grant you approved for the Bankhead Highway Corridor. Uh, the Maple Street Overlay District was approved by this body in June of two thousand eighteen to encourage the development, redevelopment and beautification of the corridor. Uh, we also at that time, uh, created a new set of architectural and site design standards for Maple Street. Uh, the Carrollton Corridor, uh, Development and Beautification Committee also recommends establishing a grant program similar to the one on Bankhead Highway. Uh, the proposed grant guidelines are identical to the Bankhead Highway guidelines. Um, so if you reviewed, um, the, the ones from Bankhead, these are the exact same guidelines. Uh, our request would be that you would allow an annual budget of fifty thousand dollars, uh, that would come from the occupational tax revenues, uh, that we are collecting on Maple Street. Um, these individual grants would not exceed ten thousand dollars, um, and we would require fifty percent match from the applicants. Uh, this grant program could be reaffirmed annually at your annual budget, um, approval time, uh, in, in, at the end of June. If I, I'm, I'm available if you have any questions. Uh, I think we have, I think just one member in addition to both council member Lane and Wojcik. And, uh, Connolly, uh, Chuck Connolly, uh, the city attorney that's here from the corridor committee. Uh, but this is something that we would like to, um, to utilize, uh, with existing property owners and then also potential property owners.
Are we voting on this tonight or just looking at it?
No, we, we are asking to go ahead and move forward the program so you would be voting on it.
Well, I, I can understand that.
Yes, you're voting on it.
Erica, I know we addressed this when we passed the grant program for the, um, Bankhead Corridor. But can you just give a hypothetical example of, of a, an applicant and what exactly this fifty thousand would be? Meaning just make up a business on Maple Street and what exactly are they getting the money for? What do they have to do? Just walk everybody through the process?
Sure. Um, and it wouldn't be fifty thousand to one, one project. It would actually only be ten. And they would have to provide cost estimates showing that they would be spending in excess of twenty because they have to have that fifty percent match. Um, if you turn to page thirty-six in your, um, in your agenda packets, you can see some of the eligible uses. This program is modeled a little bit after the Main Street facade grant program. Uh, we took it a step further though. Uh, we wanted to allow for, for instance, landscaping, um, especially if it's, uh, like in parking lots and, and related to some sort of parking lot, uh, improvement. Uh, but then also facade repair, exterior paint, awnings, signage, um, any sort of bike and pedestrian facility or even a community space. Um, the things that would not be permitted in the grant program is the money couldn't be used for rent or lease or mortgage payments. Um, inventory purchases, salaries, payrolls, any sort of operational cost would not be permitted. Um, the corridor committee reviews these requests and makes, uh, and, and, and makes decisions. Um, so it is once again reviewed, it's not an outright, uh, it's a competitive grant, so it's not automatically approved. Um, but we're really looking to try to establish, you know, corridors that are more walkable, um, that are obviously, um, more beautiful. Uh, and, uh, so basically this grant is pretty, it's got a pretty good, uh, wide range of things that we would pay for. So if, uh, for instance, Maple Street School, we'll use that one because I'm just hoping one day that's gonna happen. Um, if they wanted to come in and, uh, redevelop that school for some sort of use, either, uh, commercial or residential or a mixture of both. Uh, the applicant could, uh, utilize this grant program, um, to pay for some specific, uh, part of, uh, their redevelopment. It could be anything from a portion of the landscaping, the exterior spaces, or it could be, you know, awnings or signage. Um, you know, our goal is to leverage the money, private dollars, which is why we want to be able to have that match. Um, but that's just an example. I can give you another one if you want.
Erica, uh, to the corridor, uh, committee, uh, thank you very much for your work. I know there's some members, um, of the corridor committee in here right now. Um, and one of our corridors, uh, that is going to be addressed, I'm not sure the order of addressing the corridors will be Alabama Street. Alabama Street is different from the other corridors in that it is mostly residential. So what I would like to encourage, um, the corridor committee to do is to seek out those same type of, and I, please do this. Please, promise me you'll do it, okay? Uh, but to seek out granting programs for people who are homeowners, improve their homes, to beautify and make that corridor as walkable as well. I charge the citizens who are in here tonight, those who live on Alabama Street or who care about Alabama Street, to light a fire under that corridor committee. And light a fire under us as well to make sure that we stick to our guns and to make sure that every citizen in this town is treated fairly. To make sure that every corridor is treated the same as this one and that one. The Alabama Street Corridor deserves just as much attention as every other corridor. We can nod and we can say yes. I just want to make sure that that's the track that we're on, okay? Because Alabama Street's different from the rest because people live there.
Right, absolutely. Uh, you know, we have to look at them kind of individually on their own, on their own merits. And you, you're absolutely correct that Alabama Street is a lot more unique because there's residences and we'll address that when we get, when we get to Alabama Street. And I think we'll find a, a way to, to do a similar program.
And I, and, and to the council up here, I know y'all don't like to hear me talk about this, but just know, as long as Gerald Byrd sits in this seat. This is how, I mean, I've been here twenty years. I've sung the same old song. This jukebox is gonna play the same old record all the time until I see a change. And people out there, take it upon yourselves to come here, keep coming and light a fire under us and make us do it. Otherwise, we're up here for no reason. We're doing what a portion of the city wants to see and not all of our citizens. All, 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 all. I'm a broken record, all. Thank you.
Anybody else got anything else to say?
My name is Marcus Mitchell. I'm a citizen here in Carrollton, got a business and I'm exactly with Mr. Gerald Byrd. We have businesses down Alabama Street. So when will that day come that when we will start doing the beautification of that corridor of Alabama Street? I've been hearing we gonna do stuff and we gonna do stuff. When is the date for that? It's coming up for Alabama Street Corridor?
Uh, again, that's whatever this body de- decides. There is the T grant that is in the works now. And, uh, I believe that's about ten months out. Does that sound right? To do that green belt spur from Fourth Street all the way down to where the green belt is in that, uh, nice park that was built on Mount Zion at the river. Uh, so that's one of the first things going on. Uh, as far as the corridor itself, I, I think the order they decided was to do Bankhead, which is about to be let in Maple. And we're trying to get a grant on Maple because I think the numbers I'm hearing on it were six million dollars or somebody. It's a frightening amount of money. And, uh, and then Alabama Street is so different. It's not businesses with signs and that sort of thing. It's people's homes. And so I actually think the committee or the makeup of the committee may need to be, you know, reconsidered. Uh, because the criteria may be altogether different because it is residential.
There are some businesses.
Right.
Um, Marcus, it's funny you should bring this up because back in two thousand four, uh, we had a different mayor and council back then. But West Carrollton was identified as an enterprise zone. And we assembled a committee of designers and architects from all over the state who met inside of Trent's, uh, Alabama Street School. Trent was the principal at the time. He let us use the school to meet for about a week. They stayed here in one of the, uh, hotels here and they came up with designs for West Carrollton and what it was supposed to look like. I actually have that at my house. But it was kicked out because I was told that it would hurt, uh, people's feelings who own property along Alabama Street but don't live there. To try to bring change to that area. So because of that and because those plans are, have already been drawn up, it seems that it would have been common sense to address the most blighted part of Carrollton first. Uh, but you know, we're just like the rest of the world. We kind of put the, the lesser people last. But I think, you know, there's some Sunday school teachers up here with me, sitting beside me and they know what the Bible says about those who come last. And what, and, and how that plays out. But that's, that's okay. This is how it always plays out up here.
So, um, thank you, Councilor Byrd.
Thank you too.
On the, uh,
I ain't gonna stop.
On the Alabama, on, on the Maple Street, is that, is that beautification just gonna be straight down Maple Street? What if it's business off of Maple Street, like Watson or Re- you know, you got your business because you're not Maple Street com? What about those buildings that's there? Will, will they be able to apply for that grant?
So the, so the grant program would be basically the overlay district would be what would be permitted with, for the grant program. And I think we just went one parcel back on that. I'm looking at you Chuck, on, on Maples, on the Maple Street corridor. But I can get you a map of the overlay district and see if one of your, if one of your properties, is it, I think, is it one down Lover- Loveron Road?
Down Watson Street.
Watson, okay. Um, I can see, I don't think we went more than one parcel back though along Maple Street, um, on, on the overlay. But this grant program is for the overlay district. It was approved back in two thousand eighteen.